Very good. Meetings called to order at 6:02. May we have roll call, please, Lindsey?
Yes. Chairperson Philip Goldstein.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Here.
Commissioner Tom Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Wendy Newlin.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Lewis.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Michael Lowry.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Renzo Bianchi.
Thank you. Commissioners, any amendments to the agenda?
Nope.
No. All the regular commissioners are here, so... Michael, you won't vote this evening. Public comment. This is general public comment opportunity for anybody that wishes to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, although the... One of our business items does have a public hearing. Or has anybody signed up or otherwise wishes to speak on a general topic not on the agenda? No, then we'll move... No?
No one has signed up.
Okay. We will close the general public comment. Commissioners and staff, the consent agenda consists only of the meeting minutes from December 3 meeting. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. Do I have a motion on item 5A, 5, the consent agenda?
Moved to approve the December 3, 2024 meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. Okay. Under public hearings, we have one business item, item 6A, conditional use permit for Harmony Assisted Living in Memory Care Community. Chad.
Thank you, Chairperson. Again, tonight, we're here to present a request for conditional use for an assisted living and memory care facility in the Harmony subdivision. The applicant is Elton Development, represented by Mike Chittister, and JR Engineering, represented by Ken Merritt. In accordance with our table 2.1 of the code, a public hearing process was required for a conditional use review. So this notice was sent out notifying the public of today's and the subsequent hearing with town council. So this is a planning commission recommendation for a town council approving decision. General, I would like to start by defining what exactly the use is that is being proposed here. So assisted living refers to a type of housing that is designated for senior individuals that are mentally or physically limited, that may need some assistance with their daily activities, but do not require the intensive medical care provided in nursing homes. So in a broader sense, these facilities help with daily activities that I mentioned, such as bathing, dressing, eating, mobility, things of that nature. And onsite staff are there to support for personal care and medical supervision. And so while this assisted living use is permitted within the CMU zoning district with conditions, it does require conditional use approval within the Harmony Corridor district. So as you see in this table, everything in orange is identifying the Harmony Corridor. As such, this is noted as a conditional use for assisted living facilities within the town. These are due to potential or perceived greater than anticipated impacts on the surrounding areas. So the conditional use review is discretionary approval process, identified for uses which may have unique or specific characteristics that could create greater than expected impacts on the surrounding properties. This process results in approvals with conditions to ensure that they will not have significant adverse impacts on surrounding properties, or denials if those impacts cannot be mitigated. And again, in addition to what the technical requirements of our code, this will also be reviewed against the conditional use review criteria, which I'll highlight for everyone as they can review and look back on as we go throughout this presentation. One of those is that the proposed conditional use shall comply with all regulations of the applicable zoning district unless accompanied by variance approval in a separate action. Two, that this conditional use shall conform to the character of the area within the same zoning district, and the use shall have no more adverse effects on health, safety, or welfare of the surrounding properties, or be no more injurious to the property or improvements of the area that would generally be permitted within that same district. Additionally, if this proposal is consistent with any policy in the comprehensive plan that encourages mixed uses or densities, the proposed conditional use will not substantially impair the appropriate use or development of the adjacent properties, and that no significant traffic issues are created by this conditional use. And as stated in above, in summary, this is a proposed development, including 145,000 square feet facility with 150 units, 126 of those intended to be assisted living apartments, 24 of those being memory care suites. So a little background of where we're at. So this property consists of 6.4 acres and is currently undeveloped. It is immediately adjacent to Harmony Road, which is an arterial road here in the town of Timneth, and Bus Grove to the west. So it is at that northeast intersection of those two roadways. The site does have slopes downward from its high point to the south. There's a lake canal ditch that runs along the eastern property of this site, which creates a natural buffer between properties to the adjacent development within the Harmony Club seventh filing. The zoning of this property is commercial mixed use, but because it lies within 1,000 feet of Harmony Road, it is subject to the Harmony Corridor overlay district standards. The CMU zoning district is intended primarily for retailer, commercial uses, and office use, with the option for high-density residential developments. This corridor overlay district focuses on creating a cohesive commercial corridor with high-quality human-scale design. I think it is also important to note that within the intent statement of our Harmony Corridor standards in the code, it states that it is to guide developments in creating a distinct entry in commercial corridor, enhance visual continuity between different developments, and highlight the town of Timneth. So within this district overlay, the use of single-family attached and detached is actually not permitted. So there's an adjacent property that went through the plating process that does provide these attached and detached development types or uses. Those properties underwent the Harmony overlay, which permitted those specific uses within that area. So I... Based on the intent statement within the Harmony Corridor, I do think that that does not necessarily reflect what that intent was. So I do think it is important to keep that in mind, that the Harmony Corridor, which spans 1,000 feet north and south of Harmony Road, was intended to create that district to guide developments and create a distinct commercial corridor, was the intent behind that additional standard. Again, the zone... Underlying zoning of CMU does conform with the comprehensive plan designation also, which being commercial mixed use. I think it's important to note that these districts were intended to be located adjacent to arterial roads, similar to what we're seeing within the subject property here. So here is just a glance at what was proposed by the applicant for this site. They will go into a little bit more detail and have further guidance on proposed elevations and things like that. But I think it's important to highlight a few of the items within this. So this building, one building, will consist of two stories throughout, with a step-back partial third floor, which is represented by the darker tone of brown here in this document. At its tallest point, the building would be... Building feature is 49 feet 10 inches. That would be for stairwells within the site. The actual building itself, I believe, is measured or proposed to be at 43 feet to parapet, which complies with the CMU zoning district of a 40-foot height allowance. This third story will be stepped back from Harmony Road to help limit that exposure along that fridget. As for the site amenities, this will include parking for staff and visitors, obviously, landscaping, and a soft-surface trail, gardens, gathering spaces, and an internal courtyard. So at a conceptual level, this proposal is meeting the dimensional standards within the town of Timneth at this time. So just at a high level here, the maximum coverage allowed within this district is 80% of that lot. This proposed facility is only proposing 42%. So below that threshold, there is a four-area ratio for the density, essentially that allows for twice the size of the lot itself in building square footage, is how that would be measured. So that could be up to the allowable height for that zoning district. They could go... It meets that threshold of square footage, as long as they meet all the other requirements of that code. So this proposed facility is well below that at a .52. The front setbacks, they are meeting for the Harmony Corridor. We do have a 50-foot standard setback off of that road to ensure conformity as they go throughout the corridor. So they are exceeding that requirement and meeting that at this time, and complying with any other setbacks based on our initial review. Again, height being 50% allowance within this district. The stairwells, two within the site, would go up to the 49 feet 10 inches. The overall building itself is proposed to be lower than that. Then we got into the requirements for parking. So based on the table that is within the town's land use code, it is required to have one space per 1,000 square feet of building for the proposed use of 145,000 square-foot building. That roughly comes up to 146, so it's just over 145,000 square feet. However, in reviewing it against what would be maybe senior living in the code, that requirement is actually reduced significantly in as at .6 spaces per unit, which actually aligns with the Institute for Transportation Engineers, which is an agency that planners and engineers utilize to review parking and other standards and compliance generally in best practice. So they actually also recommended a .39 units for assisted living, with an average of .6 based on their case studies throughout the United States. So to address this, we've spoken with the applicant team, and we think that there may be an error within the code we discussed as a group that does not necessarily align with what we're seeing in other areas and within the ITE. So we would be proposing a land use code amendment to adjust the parking standards for this use specifically. It could be presented to this group maybe in January for your feedback, just understanding of where that is now. As it lies now, a waiver request would be required in order to reduce their parking from what is allowed by code. So currently, the proposed parking is 122, so they would be short 24, which exceeds the 10% threshold that allows staff to administer and waive parking or increase up to 10%. So I just wanted to give that background in there as to kind of where we're at in the comparison, not only to other similar uses within code, but within the ITE as well. So staff have reviewed this and find that the site... Or I apologize. The conditional use is generally meeting the criteria that was discussed earlier. Our recommendation is the approval of the assisted living and memory care with the following conditions, one being that site lighting shall not exceed 30,000 Kelvin threshold in color temperature, and be designed to limit light spill and glare to the adjacent user. Our code does not necessarily get into light temperature at this time, so we felt that it was best to identify that as a condition to ensure that glare and spill was mindful of any adjacent users to this property. So we had just formally included that as a condition from staff. Also, to increase the evergreen plantings along the site's eastern boundary, which does abut a developing parcel currently. So as planning commission, you will have the ability to recommend to town council for approval, approval with conditions or denial of this use. It is your role to review the proposed use of the assisted living against the conditional use criteria mentioned previously, considering potential impacts on the surrounding properties due to the unique or specific characteristics of the use. You may discuss the proposed conditions tonight as well, to mitigate any of this impact that you believe would be reasonably result... As a result of this use. This is a public hearing, and staff did receive a public comment via email, which we have provided to everyone within the planning commission. We did receive a comment as well from your fellow planning commissioner, Renzo, that I just wanted to mention on the floor. His comment being that he believes that this would be a good addition to the community, which would allow for many residents with aging family members to be closer to them. He also did have a question related to what staff identified as the addition... Potential addition of emergency services within the site based on the use, and where and how that flow would work within the site, and any impacts that they have due to the safety on the site. So I think I could briefly just discuss that now. So there is one access point to this property right now, currently off of Club Drive. So any sort of emergency response would ideally or most likely utilize that as their way to enter the site, as anyone within the public would also do. I think it's important to note that it's being proposed that the entrance also face that frontage of the site. So access should be relatively simple and easy, being that it is facing the west side of that site. Fire Authority does have the requirement for secondary access. As we go through the review process, we will ensure that we are enforcing that requirement on any site plan for this use. It is being... I think the applicant is intending that there probably will be this requirement, so they have represented what may be an access off of Harmony Road for emergency uses only, so that would not be public access, just for emergency access. In addition, there would be easements throughout the property to ensure that any services could adequately serve this property, ensuring safety of not only those that are in need, but just the surrounding community itself. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ken, and he'll give you a little bit more background on the proposal.
Commissioner Goldstein, can we just take a pause for a minute? Our YouTube feed, the audio is working tonight, but the video isn't, so I just want to take a moment to see if we could address that, just for one second, please.
Sure. It hasn't been working since the beginning.
The audio is working, but the video has not been working.
Just to kill some time, it's probably worth noting that at least two of us here in the room tonight are anxious to get home and see our West Virginia University Mountaineers playing football in a bowl game this evening, but don't let that put any undue pressure on you staff.
Who's the other?
Mr. Brooks there.
Am I okay to start?
Ken, you can go ahead and start if you'd like, just to save time, but just wanted to see if we could troubleshoot...
Good evening, planning commission. My name's Ken Merritt with JR Planners, Engineers, and Landscape Architects. I'm here today with Mike Chittister, with Elton Development, and Liz Peterson, with HCM Architects, to present this project to you. We're excited about it. Happy holidays, everybody. I'm actually going to allow... Going to ask Mike to come up and make some opening comments, and then myself and Liz will get into the details a little bit more. Thank you.
Can you go through the... Sorry. It's not so far. All right. Okay, sounds good. Commissioners, great to be with you tonight. I appreciate the chance to speak about this project. My name is Mike Chittister. I'm the Director of Development for Elton Development. We're a Boise-based real estate development company focusing in active adult, senior housing, and independent assisted and memory care, and appreciate the chance to be here. Our plan tonight is for me to give a little bit of introduction to who we are and kind of the vision, what we're trying to accomplish here, the type of project we'd be here. Then I have Ken speak to some of the more technical items, and then, following that, we have Liz Peterson, who's from the architecture team, will spend a minute or two just speaking to the project architecture. So that's our plan tonight. Begin by thanking staff for a lot of time focusing on this project, trying to find a route for this development. Sincerely, we appreciate that. Again, we're based in Boise. We work within the Intermountain West, Pacific Northwest. We found this site through an operator that had just done a project in this area, and so we... That's how we've arrived here. We... That gives you a little bit of an idea about us, but there's another... If we can go to the next slide, just one more team member that we should speak about that's important, is we're the real estate part of this group, but assisted... What we're asking for today is conditional use on an assisted living, memory care facility. That's a business that has 100 employees, operations, patient care, food service, a lot of things. And so the group that we're partnering with and that would be the operation partner is called Stellar Senior Living. They're based in Salt Lake City, but an integral part of this team, a great operator that we would bring to the table. This gives you an idea of some of the projects that they have and the areas they're working in. I think this is already outdated. I think they've acquired a few new projects, but a growing company, good presence here in Colorado, some projects in Grand Junction and in Colorado Springs, but also four, five projects in this area. Littleton, Littleton Loveland, Parker, I believe, and then the most... The newest project that they just opened about a year and a half ago is in Broomfield. It's called The Gallery at Broomfield. And if you wanted to have an idea of the type of project, the quality level, a similar project to what we're proposing here, that would be a great thing to look at. And so that's our operating partner, and will be a big part of the success of this project. Thanks, Chad. So I think, you know, we came here for a lot of reasons. I think the reason we looked in this general area, but I think the reason we're probably here today in Timneth is a lot of it has to do with Harmony. We... You know, in real estate, you look at a lot of sites, and you have a lot of opportunities to develop in this area. There were several options, but we really feel just strongly about all that's happened there, and we feel like we have a chance to kind of nestle into a community that planned, a community that spent 20 years, you know, creating about 500 homes, and what I think is just a really fantastic development. You know, if I were to tell you some of the comparable properties that we looked at in this area, you know, that could be an opportunity. One is kind of next to it's an industrial building. It's kind of an industrial park, general commercial use. It was a flat site. It was... I could move the property boundaries wherever I wanted. It was easy to develop. But when you look around it, there really wasn't much soul and, you know, much heart to that development. Other properties that are in fill, you kind of felt like you were kind of crowded upon. And so we just love this because it feels like we can take our community and just fit it inside an existing community. The quality of Harmony is really excellent. You look at the common areas, the facilities, the roadways, and everything. It's built to a level of quality that's unusual. They didn't have to do all the things they did, is how I would phrase it. And so we think the quality is very great there. When you look at the amenities and lifestyle, there's miles and miles of trails, there's a golf course there, there's, you know, this site in particular, you're kind of on an island. You have your own kind of identity and your own location. There's a canal with 40, 50-year-old trees lining it. So it's just, in this opportunity, it's an amazing setting, and it really, for all the work that we do, it's an unusual setting to find. We're very enthusiastic about that. It does come with some strings attached, though. That is, the expectations from the owners of the property are very high. This is the gateway. This is the entry. This is kind of the face of Harmony. And so we don't have a chance to create an ugly side of the building with a bunch of CMU, and, you know, this is four-sided architecture. The expectations are high. You know, we will... That's going to take some work and some cost, but we are excited enough about the location and the setting that we're ready to do that. If you drive up there today, right now, you'll find dozens of trees dressed in Christmas lights. That doesn't happen next to an industrial park, so we just think this is an amazing site. Thanks, Chad. One of the other reasons we came here is just because there's what we would consider a hole in the market, meaning there's just... We have a number of folks that do demand studies for us that tell us, you know, the places to go. There's a gentleman that did this study out of Portland. He's been doing this for 40 years. We tell him... We say he's the guy who tells us to say no. He usually tells us, "Don't do it." And when he did this project, he said it was just a very... The opportunity, the demand needed here is very unusual. So those are some quotes from a study that he provided, but we just feel like there's a need here. And if you look just geographically, if you look at that map, three to five miles, you really don't have competing facilities very much. And we feel like, you know, with this project being completed in probably three years from now, there'll just... The community will continue to grow around the building. So it's just a... We just feel like this is a place that... Where we can fill a need and kind of bring people out of Fort Collins, perhaps, and out of Windsor, and have a place where they can be close to their families. Thanks. And then I guess I would just say, finally, a lot of times people hear senior housing, and they think rest home, and that's because we've all been to those, you know, before. And the mind that might come... The picture that might come to your mind is, you know, a meal on a tray that's been microwaved, and, you know, one room with a knitting group or something like that. And that's not what we're doing now. It's... This is intended to be a very active community, a lot of amenities. You have theaters, you have group rooms for exercise classes, or for watching the Super Bowl as a community. You have theater... You have fitness, you have three or four dining experiences. We're planning sort of a roof, a third-level rooftop... kind of bring people out of Fort Collins perhaps, and out of Windsor, and have a place where they can be close to their families. Thanks. And then I guess I would just say finally, a lot of times people hear senior housing and they think rest home, and that's because we've all been to those, you know, before, and the mind that might come, the picture that might come to your mind is, you know, a meal on a tray that's been microwaved and, you know, one room with a knitting group or something like that, and that's, that's not what, what we're doing now. It's, this is intended to be a very active community, a lot of amenities, you have theaters, you have group rooms for exercise classes or for watching the Super Bowl as a community, you have theater, you have fitness, you have three or four dining experiences, we're planning sort of a roof, a third level rooftop deck, just small area, you can go out, get above everything and see, look to the mountains. So these are just highly amenitized, high-quality projects that, where you're really trying to create community activity and a lot of energy, and that's, that's what we, we in our operator would intend to do here. So that gives you an idea of what we're trying to accomplish here and why we want to be in this location. And I'll turn it over to Ken to talk about some more of the specifics.
Next slide. Well, as always, Chad did a great introduction and reviewed the project, I think, real completely, so I will likely be redundant, and I apologize, but we need to go through this. Just by way of just general orientation, the top of your slides this evening will be north. The site is located in that pink rect, that pink triangle, and it's approximately 6.4 acres. It is in the CMU Zone District, but it is governed due to its proximity to Harmony Road by the Harmony Corridor Overlay District, which is really an important factor in the design of this project overall. Along our north boundary is the Lake Canal, which Chad had mentioned, and along our west boundary is Club Drive, and south is Harmony Road, obviously. Next slide. So this is an aerial sketch of the proposed development. I want to point this out, on the north is to the, is to the upper left-hand corner of the slide, Harmony Road is on our south boundary, Club Drive is on our, is on our western boundary, and there is, that'll provide primary access to the site for visitors and residents to the facility, but as Chad mentioned, there is a secondary point of access for emergency vehicles only, and that'll be on the far eastern side of the site, direct off of Harmony Road, which is on the right-hand side of this, of this image. The reason I point, I wanted to show this in kind of an aerial perspective, is that from Harmony Road right away, the north right away of Harmony Road, to our north boundary line, there's approximately a 14-foot elevational difference, which, which, which actually normally would be a constraint on a project, but here it provides us a rare opportunity to do something that helps to really sort of plant the building in a unique condition. That 14-foot of elevational difference that exists allows us to take the elevation, allows us to actually tuck the building into the grade as we head from south to north, thereby actually mitigating the height of the three-story element of the building itself. So we can actually lower the building relative to our north boundary line and the roundabout of Club Drive, so that it's approximately seven to eight feet lower than our north boundary line and the roundabout of Club Drive itself. In this image, the light gray area represents the two-story, the two-story mass of the building. Now, Mike actually pointed this out, but this is a four-sided architecture, there are no ugly sides of the building, it's actually eight-sided architecture because we have an internal courtyard, which, which looks to, which surrounds the entire internal courtyard itself. But this is also building-forward design, in that the building is being placed within approximately 50 feet of the right-of-way of Harmony Road. So there are no, there's nothing between the north right-of-way of Harmony Road and the south facade of the building but landscape. The three-story portion of the building is shown in gray, and as I mentioned, as we go from south to north, we're tucking the building into the grade, so that three-story building, which is 43 feet to the top of the parapet wall, and there, there are two towers in the building, which provides stairway access to the roof, which are 49 feet and some change above finished grade, really helps to mitigate the height of that building and lower it almost about two-thirds of a story of the building by lowering it that seven, eight or eight feet. Next slide. So taking a look at some of the key design notes on this project, which I think are important to point out, as I mentioned, the building is going to be placed directly adjacent to the Harmony Road right-of-way, and the Harmony Road and Club Drive streetscapes are going to be enhanced with an extensive landscaping of trees, shrubs, grasses, earthen berms, all of which are intended to help buffer the residents along the south side of the building from the, any acoustical impacts of Harmony Road as well as visual impacts of lights. So those, those, that heavy landscaping along the south side of the building will actually help improve the, the condition for those residents. Along Club Drive as well, we'll actually be able to screen the parking and the internal drive and parking areas to, that occur inside the site. The arrival, as I mentioned, is from Club Drive into a pedestrian friendly auto court. Residents and visitors will be able to turn into the site and go directly to the west-facing entrance of the facility under an architectural portice, and then as you continue to the north, there's a private drive which has parking on both sides for the most part. There's an extensive series of walking paths, gardens, a nature-observing area, as well as public gathering plaza on the far east side of the site, which is one of the requirements of the Harmony Corridor Plan, we'll get into that in a little bit. Additionally, there are some significant additional open space areas, the, at the heart of the space, the heart of the building, is an assisted living courtyard, and then on the north side of the three-story building is a memory care courtyard, and then on the north and east side of that memory courtyard, there would be a screen wall. The interior courtyard is obviously surrounded by buildings on, on all sides. Next slide. Thank you. So as I mentioned, this site is also governed by the Harmony Corridor Overlay District, which, which was a challenging exercise for us and the entire team with regards to siting this building and complying with the requirements of the, of the Harmony Corridor District. We actually started this project, believe it or not, and worked closely with staff since May of 2023, and there's, so there's been a great deal of dialogue going back and forth with various alternative plans, and we ultimately settled on this plan, which we felt met all the requirements of the Harmony Corridor District, with one possible exception needing, having to do with parking. But the Harmony Assisted, really one of the primary tenants of the Harmony Corridor District is to ensure that the Harmony Assisted Living Center creates a high-quality human-scale corridor for, for the Harmony Corridor, and that the architecture becomes a primary gateway to the town of Timneth as you head west into the town. So this architecture will make a significant statement and create that gateway effect that we're looking for on the far west, far east side of, of Timneth. The building is set to meet the requirements of the 50-foot building setback from Harmony Road right-of-way, and what I really want to point out here is that between the south facade of the building and the north right-of-way of Harmony Road, there aren't, there is no parking. The Harmony Corridor Plan does allow some limited parking to be in, in conjunction with the south-facing, with the building face, but we actually eliminated all parking and any, and any private drives on that south side. So once again, the only thing between the right-of-way and the building face is significant landscaping. There are a couple of parking spaces off the auto court, on the south side of the auto court, but they're tucked behind the primary entry wall monument of the Harmony Club Development, behind those large spruce which exist. Finally, as it relates to the Harmony Overlay District, there is a requirement for open space, obviously, in the CMU's district. The minimum requirement is 20% open space, and actually, we exceed that when you calculate the, the internal courtyards, we have 50% open space throughout the site. And then within that open space requirement, part and parcel of that open space is what needs to be, what's defined as active or usable open space, and we have 5%, the town has a 5% minimum requirement for active or usable open space, and we exceed that, and we're at 21% open space. Next slide, please. So now some of the more boring stuff. Site data, I feel obligated to kind of go through this, Chad did a great job of giving the highlights of it, but we have, the total site area is 6.4 acres. We actually have three lots, we have one buildable lot, Lot 1, which is 5.4 acres, and we have two tracks. You might remember, we actually created those tracks as part of a minor subdivision back probably late last year. But the two tracks, Track A and Track B, Track A being the primary entrance monument on the west side of the property, and Track, Track B being a open space area and detention pond on the far east side of the project, is approximately an acre in size. The proposed use, as Chad mentioned, is assisted and congregate care, which is a permitted use in the, in the CMU Zone District, but is subject to this conditional use permit within the Harmony Corridor. The building's square footage is approximately 145,000 square feet. That's a floor area ratio of .5 FAR. In the CMU Zone District, the allowable FAR is two, so we are actually only one-quarter of what the allowable FAR would be in this Zone District, hence, we have a significant amount of open space and significant buffers around all four sides of the proposed development. The ground floor area is approximately 1.4 acres, and I do want to just correct one comment, we're actually, the ground floor building area, which is the maximum building coverage, which is allowed in this district of 80%, we're actually only 20%, and I believe it was mentioned that we were 40%, but we're about 21%, 22% floor area coverage. The private drives, these would be the imperious drives in parking, is approximately 1.3 acres or 20%, and the open spaces, as I mentioned, is 3.7 acres or 58% of the site. The total parking is 122 parking spaces. I think after many discussions with staff, we recognize that the code, as it's currently been written, suggests a much higher standard, one that's sort of out of alignment with other municipalities on the front range, as well as national standards for a building of this type, a use of this type. Our 122 spaces relate, actually, is .8 spaces per unit. As Todd mentioned, as Chad mentioned, they may be bringing a, an amendment, an addendum to the development code that would reduce the requirement for, for parking in an assisted living center to be more in line with that of an age-restricted 55-year-and-older living community. .6 spaces per, per unit. We're at .8, so subject to the potential recommendation that you might make at some future date, as well as city council's approval of that proposed amendment, we will still be 26 cars greater if it were approved at .6 than are required if that amendment does take place. We feel, and Mike and his, and the Elton Group has actually done a fairly extensive analysis of other projects, both locally and through, and in the Denver metro area, and at .8 spaces per unit, we would be somewhere between four to two, significantly over the standard, I guess is the best way to put it. So that actually concludes my part of the presentation. Now we get to the really fun part. Liz Peterson is going to talk about the architecture of the development.
Hi, good evening, I'm Liz Peterson, I'm Principal in the Senior Living Market Sector for Hore Copland-Mock Architects down in Denver, we're a block from Coursefield, so right there in Lodo. I'm just gonna go through some of the design intent, some of the strategies that we took as we designed the building. Just in general, we're in compliance with, as both Mike and Ken have mentioned, we're in compliance with the Harmony Road Overlay District, as well as working really closely with, with the Harmony Architectural Control Committee. They, it's a very important project for them, as well as to us, so we all had the same intent to come up with something that really created a front door to their whole development. So this building plan incorporates a lot of the trends that you see in senior living. The, the entry, as Ken has described, off Club Drive, it's a very European kind of auto court component. When you enter the building, you see long vistas, long views into that large courtyard that they have, as well as two-story space, and within all of that blue area, those are the amenity spaces, there's a lot of flexible dining that the residents can choose, there are flexible spaces with lounges, clubrooms, theaters, all of those things are really current trends that you see in senior living. The yellow component is the memory care suite, where the residents are independent, physically independent from all the other residents, they have their own dining and lounge, and then the, the majority of the building is consumed by the lavender-colored spaces, which are the assisted live-in residence. One of the things to mention about how the parking is laid out is that we don't feel that big, large parking lots are beneficial for seniors, if they have smaller lots distributed throughout the, the project throughout the community, then they, it's closer to their units. We have, I think, four or five exits where they can come down and go out to their, to their parking spaces. So that pretty much sums it up. Next slide, Chad, please. Just in general, the building, we're using some of the same materials that you see in Harmony, again, complying with both the Harmony Road Corridor standards and what we see at, at the Harmony Division. There are a lot of other trends incorporated into this building, residents really like large windows, and of course, in Colorado, natural ventilation goes with that. We think they're, the building, it relates in and out, there are first-floor patios for residents, that's really popular for walking your dog or going for a walk yourself, as well as a majority of the units have second and, and third-story decks, individual decks. Next slide. We also, as Chad mentioned, we stepped the building back, so not only does it step from two to three stories, but it also steps back in certain areas to kind of create a tiering effect to bring the massing back. Next slide. This is a view, we consider this to kind of be the quieter side of our site, it's actually a butts, the, the large berm and the monument sign that announces whole Harmony development. So this is just a quieter corner where you start to see how the building turns its, turns its way to the south, to the Harmony Road elevation, and you can see that pathway there that Ken has described. Next slide. This is a little closer view of that Harmony Road two-story elevation, you can see the, the pathway that's right up against the building. We have discussed having these first-floor patios for residents, they might be zoned off with shrubbery, you know, landscaping and whatever, but something that kind of helps them have a little extra outdoor space, and it also helps to ground the building. But you can also see some of the articulation of the ins and outs on the building. Next slide, Chad. This is our entry, so as you're coming in off Club Drive, you can see that sort of European courtyard where the, the woman is on her red bike there, coming in, typical kind of idea of having a covered spot for residents to be dropped off or picked up. But what goes along with that is there's also a whole kind of residential passeo that runs along there, so it's a spot for residents can sit, do a little people watching, and as it moves along the elevation, it also becomes an outdoor dining space on this west side. You also see where the third- You also see where the third story, we call it like a sky lounge or a sunset lounge area, where the residents can view the western views. This is the northwest side of the building. It starts to show more of that articulation where the building steps back. That one unit will have this great outdoor deck. What it also starts to show is that we created like a datum line at the second, at the two-story mass that continues around the building so that it holds all of that together, whether you're a two-story, three-story space. This is toward the east side of our building, so it's kind of a quieter part of the building, and yet the architecture still maintains all of that, those same principles. You can see the vertical element that we had on the stair tower. On the west side, we also have on the east side here that helps transition from two to three stories. And again, some of those pockets of parking. And then the last image we have is again on the east side, but toward the northeast side of the massing. And you can see some of the landscaping that Ken's proposing to help buffer some of the views from the property just adjacent to us to the east. But again, you can start to see how that massing alters the corner. And that's where we are. We're in schematic design right now, but we're excited about going to the next step, working with the staff, with the town, and developing this project further. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz, Mike, Ken. This is a public hearing on this. Is there anybody signed up for this, or anybody wish to speak? I don't presume so, but...
No one has signed up.
Okay. Anybody that did not sign up wish to speak on this? Okay, we closed the public comment on this item. And Ken, did you have something else you wanted to add before I bring it up here?
Is there any questions or comments?
Okay. Chad, look like you have something.
Yeah, there is one clarification I wanted to make real quick. So just so that everyone is aware, I know that we've gone into detail from the applicant's side of what this building will look like and kind of what that site is intended to be. Again, this is for the use itself, but I think having that context is helpful for you guys to understand if there are potential impacts, what those could be, and what the intent is already done, and help frame anything that you guys may be considering as far as conditions or recommendations of approval.
Well, yeah, I realize we crossed over into the site plan boundary, if you will, and we'll see this again as a site plan.
Yes, and again, this was just reviewed...
Assuming it gets approved tonight.
Yes, there was no in-depth review of this, so it would be subject to an at-site plan review by staff for work compliance with the code, standards, all technical items within the town, including traffic and other items like that.
Chad, could you explain real briefly, again, you did a nice job, but just real briefly, conditional use, and maybe an example of something else where there was a conditional use? And I realize you have been here a whole long time. I know there was one for Timothée Beerworks at one time when they were approved, but any other conditional use that is a good example to explain to those commissioners? I've been here a long time.
Yeah, so when these uses were determined within the table, these uses were identified to be suitable for the underlying zoning district. However, due to the unique quality of them or the nature of the use in itself, there could be impacts on the surrounding properties that Town Council and Planning Commission wanted to ensure, were thought of at the beginning to mitigate any of those concerns. In addition to the one you just mentioned, there was also the, what is now Maverick Gas Station was also a conditional use within the Harmony Corridor. So, based on potential impacts with traffic for that specific use, that was deemed conditional, so it needed recommendation from Planning Commission and approval from Town Council. That one, I believe they limited their conditions to hours of operation. They didn't impose much to the site itself.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful. Commissioners, then, you can, if you have other questions and comments, incorporate the conditional use aspect of that into... So with that, who would like to go first here? Really speak at once. Marty?
All right. So with this, I saw in the package, there was a comparison with parking and stuff that was really helpful to put in of other projects, so thank you. I was wondering on this, if you look at like average trips, how does this compare to like retail or office space, things like that?
Yeah, so the intended users, traffic-wise within this site, would be most likely within those that are working within the site, or those that are visiting family members on the site. I believe that number would be significantly less trips per day than a commercial use that could be permitted within this property. But again, there is a master traffic report for Harmony that we will review again at site plan to ensure that this is in compliance with that. But those numbers did derive from potential high-intense commercial uses that would likely have multiple trips per day rather than just in and out of work.
My assumption was that. I was just testing that.
Yep.
And as far as like emergency vehicles, I would imagine this would be higher. Is there any comparisons that we have to like facilities and, you know, what the emergency traffic would be?
As far as the likeliness of trips per day, not necessarily within the town. We do not have that data on hand. However, yes, due to the nature of this use, there is the potential for those to be a result to have additional emergency facilities or emergency access to the property itself. I'm not exactly sure what's within the scope of the use. I don't know if there's anyone on staff that has anything to do with as far as medical, but it would lend itself to higher traffic counts. But I think the orientation and the location next to an arterial road does seem beneficial and appropriate for such use.
Okay. And then just a comment that six, if I remember right, six of 122 spaces are handicap spots that, for use of this, it seems a little bit low. I'm a recent user of handicap spots, luckily temporary, but makes me more sensitive, but six doesn't seem like a lot.
That's a valid recommendation. I don't think that ADA has a different requirement for this specific use. It's typically just based on the required number of parking, but we can look into that to ensure that that is actually adequately meeting the demand of those with accessibilities.
Okay. And then question is, will the facility have transportation? Many, okay. Okay. So then with all that, I think from the land use, typical, you know, actually permitted uses for a CMU or like retail, medical, entertainment facilities, office space, medical, dental, things like that, it doesn't seem like this would be higher impact than any of those, right?
That is how staff has viewed this, this application and this use. You are correct. There is a varying number of uses within the Harmony Corridor and also within the Harmony PD Overlay that could be permitted within this site that potentially could have different impacts to the surrounding properties other than what is being proposed today.
Okay. And then last thing is, and I don't know is an appropriate answer, but in looking at this, I was, I think you started to get to an answer on this one, but I guess I was just wondering, you know, looking at permitted uses, I was wondering why this one, this use was a conditional. It predates all of you and probably all of us as well, but it was just kind of...
Yeah, it certainly does. However, I do think that there are concerns over emergency services and other things that I think potentially the council at the time wanted to ensure were thought of and planned for. Looks like Logan might actually have a response to this.
No, I was just looking at the use table, and if you look at the Harmony Corridor use table specifically, the majority of uses are either permitted with conditions or conditional uses. There's only a few that are outright permitted.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other?
I've got one comment, Phil. I think the use makes a lot of sense. I think this is a good location. But one, one thing, I guess that will probably come up in the next session more than this, we are in proximity to the Lake Canal. And as you discussed, it's tucked away, but from what I can tell, there's no basement to this facility. There's not going to be a lot of excavation, but there's likely to be very shallow groundwater because you're right next to that canal. That's why you have 50-year-old trees that are still alive over there. And I'm guessing if you excavate, or there's kind of a picture of a retaining wall, if you try to excavate closer to that canal, you're going to see a lot of water. So I think that there's a lot of issues with groundwater, shallow groundwater in the area. You'd want to look at your elevator shafts at the bottom. There's definitely going to be a sump pump, and there are state regulations associated with groundwater. If you pump the groundwater out, like in a sump pump, there are requirements, if you have a large volume, to treat that water, although that is an area that they're re-looking at because it may not be cost-effective, particularly downtown Denver. That could be something that would impact this site. It's, it may not be a big deal right now, but it could be a big deal when you actually engineer the building and look at foundations, and it's something to keep in mind. I'm sure Town Engineer will be aware of it.
Justin, I see in your head, do you, may I call on you? Any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking the same things, but again, this is, at this stage, we're at the use stage, but definitely there'll be further investigations as we move forward on that. But I had the same thoughts too with the, so, yep.
Great.
I guess as engineers, all think alike, so, mostly, yeah.
Mike?
Yeah. May I address?
Certainly. Please, briefly, yeah, if you have.
We did, we have done some initial exploratory moorings, and so the groundwater actually is, is very low. There hasn't been any sign of there being any high-water table on the site so far. We have more to do, but we certainly will address that in the site development permits stage.
Thanks, Ken. Ken? Mike?
Ken? No? Ken? My question's for you, anyway. In building off what Tom said, 50-year-old trees back there, are they going to stay?
Yes. Actually, the, all those trees, which are probably, you know, anywhere between 50 and 100 years old, those are all going to remain. They're actually off our property, for the most part. But we're, as Chad pointed out, we're actually going to do some further screening with other coniferous trees as well along that, along that eastern border of the property, yeah.
Appreciate it. And then Chad?
Actually, that's where the, the natural, the, yeah, the nature viewing area is on that west side because there are a lot of raptors that roost in those trees during the winter months, so it's an opportunity for people to get out and see owls and eagles in those trees during the, during the winter months when they're roosting.
Cool. Thank you. Sorry, Chad, I've got a question for you. So it, I've been on this road so many times, I can't, it's divided, right? Club Drive? So it'll be right in, right out of this facility?
Correct. Right in, right out, and they'll utilize the roundabout to get out.
That's not going to change, there won't be a divider or anything put in there so people can go left?
Based on spacing, no. That would be the final alignment as of now for that section.
Yeah, I think there's already a median already there currently, I believe.
Correct. Yep, there is a median.
Okay. And you don't see that as a negative, having that additional traffic at that traffic circle right and about?
No, I think the functionality of that circle would land well for that, and I don't necessarily, we don't determine that to be a negative impact within that, within the traffic of that area.
Okay. Thanks.
Wendy?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Marty said. Thank you for putting that chart in with the parking comparisons of the other facilities. That's going to be helpful for upcoming meetings. Is this not the appropriate meeting to ask about the emergency access? Is that our next?
Go right ahead, because I was going to ask too. Go ahead.
Okay. So if you could bring up slide number nine.
From their presentation?
Yes, showing the emergency access. Yeah, this would be it. So there's an emergency access from Harmony Road. So would you be able to turn left in that? Would an ambulance be able to turn left in that going east on Harmony Road? Or would they have to go up to Colorado Boulevard, make a U-turn?
No, that's a very good question, and I didn't get into the detail, but we've worked closely with puter fire authority requiring, which required a secondary point of access because of the length of our, our internal roadway network, okay? So we talked about various alternatives, and the alternative that I think the fire department most appreciated was providing direct access off of Harmony Road. And the emergency vehicles would do exactly what you said, which apparently happens all the time. They go up to the light at Latham Parkway, and they make a U-turn, and they would turn into, into the site. And they can do that apparently at that intersection because apparently it happens, it happens today. So there would be an actual 20-foot-wide emergency access only off of Harmony Road, and there would be knockover bollards. These are bollards that the fire department comes out, they release a bolt, and then they fold down so that the fire truck would be able to get off the road onto the, onto this 20-foot-wide drive. They'd probably extend over the 10-foot regional trail. They'd knock the bollards down, they would be able to get into the site. Now, we've run a auto turn through the entire site as well, which is an automation to see whether we can turn a fire truck at all the jigs and jogs in our road, as well as did an auto turn in the auto court, this sort of urban auto court, to demonstrate we could actually turn a fire truck and an emergency vehicle ambulance in that auto court adequately and get them out without having to do, you know, a 2-point, 3-point turn in order to do so. So we've worked closely to make sure that those two, the main entrance as well as the emergency vehicle access entrance operates, can operate properly. Now, the devil's in the details. We'll get to that site development stage, and we'll turn those auto turns in with our submitted for review, further review by the, by the fire department. There'll also be an emergency vehicle access drive all the way through the property so that emergency vehicles have the right to maneuver through the site. And then finally, because the, the three-story building is over the 30-foot elevation, we have to be able to stage a fire truck without riggers in the road so that they can get a ladder truck, get a ladder to the roof. And so we've, we've, we've identified where that would be, which is essentially on that sort of diagonal on the east side of the north part of the building, so we can stage a fire truck there. There's also another location, as the fire department feels it's better, on the further north side of the building. But, so I think we're in good shape there. But all, I will say, there is a frequency of emergency vehicle response to an assisted living center and memory care. We've done a number of them in Fort Collins, and I would, Mike probably knows what his statistics are, but we see it, you know, on a, not a daily basis, but certainly throughout the week.
Thank you.
I'm going to take off briefly, and then, Michael?
No, Marty asked the questions. I was interested in...
Okay. Yeah, am I correct? This emergency access is just that. It's for rare, very rare situations when the other access is unavailable, correct?
That is correct. So you may have seen, there's one actually installed next to the Chick-fil-A. So there is already a rail or a barrier, potentially knockdown bollards is what they might be proposing for this, but that is not for public access. There's truly, if emergency responders need to get into the site and cannot do so from the main point of access, so if there's a wreck or other... of access, so if there's a wreck or other item that is prohibiting them from getting into the site, they have to have a secondary access in order to, to, to respond.
Right. Because it, this is not, by any means, to Wendy's point, this is not ideal in terms of the, uh, the having to turn around all the way up at, at Latham, nor is the roll-off area very sufficient there. But it's just that, it's for rare, very rare use.
Yeah. And to add to that point, so if a responder is traveling eastbound to get to this site, Club Drive would be the, the main point of access for them to, to get to the site. However, if there is something, a barrier there, um, they believe that they have the turning radii to, um, use Colorado Boulevard as a way to get to the secondary access.
Okay. I'll address the parking issue. Uh, staff seems pretty, pretty certain that, as you mentioned, there may be an error in the standards, and you did some additional homework on this, which is always appreciated. Um, I, I don't have a real problem with that. I, I think I much prefer, I personally would much prefer this be handled as a waiver as opposed to, while we may, uh, change in, in, in addition to the other 33 land use code amendments that we have coming our way over the next several months, we may very well look at this, I presume, at that time or, or elsewhere. But much prefer that, a waiver, to a, what would I consider a retroactive land use code, uh, change. And I realize you were talking about doing this later, but it, it would kind of have the appearance of a retroactive change. So if a waiver is also appropriate, that would seem to be more, uh, more appropriate, if you will, not to be redundant in this situation.
We, we appreciate the feedback, Phil. So, um, as we do our updates within the code, it is often determined throughout different reviews, um, what does and does not work within the code. So this one came to our attention that doesn't necessarily align with the industry for what this use is. Um, so we are in support, in favor of adding a change to this. Uh, I think adding, understanding that this may have been an error from the town's perspective, that could potentially, uh, be more of a burden in a, um, request from the applicant team that with a little, not, uh, full certainty for the waiver, even though we're supporting it right now, or at least from staff's level. Um, so that's where we were comfortable with the, um, being proactive and including it in what we were already doing, not as a single one-off, um, code amendment that I can understand your perspective, that that could, uh, be viewed in that lens. But that's where we were comfortable with that, um, that as being one of the avenues for this.
And I might add that, um, evaluating our parking table is on our list of amendments. Um, that was supposed to be more of a comprehensive, uh, review, but, uh, so that this would be incorporated in that, but we can also, you know, disaggregate the two and do this one solo and then do the rest later.
Well, certainly, rather than, as you graciously acknowledged, somewhat falling on your sword, so that we're casting our partners on the staff here in a better light, um, I think, and we're going to talk after this business item about, very briefly, we're going to talk about the upcoming land use code changes in a slightly different context. But this certainly points out, and, and we'll hear this again, why, we all know the land use code is a living document. And the whole purpose of making amendments, um, is because things change, circumstances change. Uh, so this is a perfect example, and we do appreciate the extra work you've put into acquaint us with this proactively.
And just looking at the timing, um, I know that the recommendation was maybe to have this come back on January 7th for consideration. So this conditional use will be in ordinance before town council on January 14th and 28th, correct? So they could run at the same time?
Yes. And then it would need two readings, so then it wouldn't be approved until the 28th? Yeah.
So they could be, it doesn't necessarily have to be retroactive. They could actually be at the same meeting, perhaps?
Sorry. So the land use code would be two readings?
And when conditional use as well?
And the conditional use?
We have it as a resolution through our code.
Oh, okay.
But it's a way, we, we can also simply move it along tonight as a waiver, correct?
Yes, you can make that recommendation that that is a waiver.
You, staff, and Carolyn, the town attorney, no problem if it, assuming the commissioners concur that it be considered as a waiver at this stage?
So the applicant has not yet applied for a waiver, and that is a separate consideration. So one of the conditions could be that there's a requirement for either a waiver or a land use code change amendment that would bring this into compliance.
Okay. So it can be a waiver at this stage?
Isn't this just the use?
Correct.
And the number of spaces is more a site plan thing?
Exactly. So once they get to the site plan, they either have to have
Yeah.
a use or a table that aligns with what they're proposing, or if it does not align, they need to ask or request for a?
Yeah. So it's not a, it's not a factor in what we're deciding tonight. So I don't think it would need a waiver.
Yeah, that's helpful, isn't it? Yes, that's helpful, and it, uh, it may be essentially a moot point if we do move forward with a land use code amendment, if I'm not out of line there.
Yeah. And waivers are, are heard before council. Um, so if, if they pursued a waiver, I don't think it would need to come back before you. We could, they could just bring it forward to council. And I think they want the assurance, um, prior to site plan supplemental, so they know that they're designing and rightsizing the parking.
Now, I'm a little confused because you're, you're, Carolyn, you see where I'm coming from?
Oh, so I think it goes back to one of your conditions could be that if, that they need to either comply with the town code about the minimum number of parking or apply for a waiver. Could be the condition. And then I think what Logan's saying is that it's likely they would apply for a waiver before coming back to you for the site plan so that then when they came back to the site plan, they would know that that would, that that site plan parking issue had been resolved. So that will be up for staff to work with the applicant about which direction they prefer, um, depending on our timing of a land use code amendment for parking. So there are two possible paths, both of which would comply with the requirement.
Okay. Meaning we would move this forward, assuming we do, uh, with the condition that they apply for a waiver, as you've stated?
Unless their parking, um, is consistent with minimum requirements at the time of the site plan approval. Yep.
Okay. Commissioners, other questions? I, it was easier just to say, yeah, I get it. It was what she said. Yeah, what she said. Okay. Commissioners, other questions? Tom, you got everything. Between you and Justin, two engineers talking together. You, you're okay with that? Michael, down there, anything else?
No, I think the emergency access off of Harmony is adequate. I, having run many emergency calls, it'd be coming in off Club Drive regardless, even if I was westbound on Harmony, uh, it's going to be much quicker just to make that quick turn in. So I don't see a problem with that setup.
Other commissioners, other questions? Staff, anything else to add? Okay, so unavoidably, Carolyn, we're, we're going back to, uh, because what she said probably is not sufficient for the record. Uh, we're, we're considering this with the condition that they apply for a waiver or meet the town parking standards, which is, which they are not want to do necessarily. So we're, unless they, unless we change it.
Yes, so it-
Per an amend, per a land use code amendment.
Right. So what you're looking for is a motion to approve with the conditions recommended by staff, the two conditions, and in an additional condition that they comply with the min, that they comply with the minimum parking space requirements in the land use code unless they've received a waiver variance.
Okay. Very good. Now it is what, all right. Do I have?
Ready for a motion?
Yes, I am ready for a motion. So-
Motion to-
Did you capture all that?
Yeah.
I have had it.
Well, if you could talk on it, otherwise I'll forget. Uh, motion to approve item 6A with the two conditions outlined by staff on lighting and the evergreen plantings and additional condition of, um, complying with-
As stated by town attorney?
Yeah. Complying with the parking, uh, minimum parking requirements as stated in the land use code or, um, can, uh, setting or applying for a waiver on the parking.
I think that's, I think sufficient. Carolyn's nodding her head, and Lindsay captured that fractured though it was a little bit. Uh, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 5-0 vote. Thank you all. Uh, moving on to business item seven, and we're going to do so very briefly. Uh, I'm going to introduce this and then turn it over to Logan. I, I asked for this, uh, to be placed on the agenda. Uh, as I mentioned, we've got a full plate coming up here after the first of the year with 33, and now it sounds like maybe 34 land use code amendments. Uh, so we're, we're going to have a, a lot to consider. I thought it would be helpful to mention tonight, and again, uh, asked her to do so very briefly, uh, simply mention some things to think about as we begin this process so that when they do get, uh, hit our agenda, we can hit the ground running with those. Uh, in particular, a couple of things. Um, how do things get to the point where we need a land use code amendment? Uh, what does the staff consider? Uh, anything that's helpful as we consider these things. Um, and in particular, how do we parse the details when these land use code amendments come forward? So we got some pretty smart people up here, all of you smarter than me. So, but I thought I'd let Logan at the stage very briefly for what's coming here in a few weeks.
Yeah. So hopefully I can address those two items. Um, and then if there are any other questions, feel free. Um, but, so I kind of just recycled these from the last time we chatted about this. But essentially, you know, it is, like Phil said, a living document, and we see that the things move very quickly in the private sector. So the technology's advanced, uh, advanced pretty rapidly, and our code doesn't necessarily keep pace with that if we're not on top of it. Um, so that's one reason. So we're always surveying for that. Um, we also, you know, predictability is key for people coming in and, and building and developing in the town. Um, so we like to, if there's any inconsistencies, if things are, you know, there's some language in the Harmony section, um, that we wrestled with quite a bit for this, uh, land use application you just heard. Um, so we really want simple language and make it as user-friendly as possible. Um, hopefully we can incorporate more graphics and illustrations to help the user or reader. Um, and then other reasons we put, uh, things forward is maybe we're just not getting what we'd like to see. Um, you know, code writing, you do your best, um, but how it hits the ground, um, especially with conventional codes with just height restrictions and setbacks, they can manifest in 100 different ways. Um, so if we're not seeing on the ground what we'd like, what the intent is, that's when we start to kind of tweak the code. Um, and so you can kind of see that visually. Here's just, I did a side-by-side. Um, but the, you know, these are pretty simple tweaks you can make in the code to get quite a drastic change in the built environment. Um, and here's a more, uh, commercial example of where placing our parking should be placed relative to the building. Um, and then other reasons we bring codes forward is they're mandated by the state. So state legislation changes over time, and we have to respond to that. Um, and then the second question, Phil, what was that?
Uh, I don't know if there was a second question.
Okay. Um, and then I, oh, I think you said, what should you guys be?
Oh, yeah.
Tips?
Yeah, just very briefly, just some tips on what we can, so that, so that when we get around to this, as I said, we hit, we get right into it. What, what are we, what are we thinking about?
So we, I kind of put the schedule together, and the yellow, the gold is kind of our research, initial research. And then that blue, um, represents when we're actually drafting the code and engaging with the community, getting feedback. So we kind of have a best practice in mind of how we want the code to be, and then we want to put that out to the public a little bit to see what the tolerance is for that and get that feedback. And then it's your job to calibrate the actual code. Um, are we going too far? Um, so you, so that's what you need to think about. Like, what, what do we want to achieve in the long term? What is the desire of the community? And you're weighing all of those things and trying to hit a sweet spot. Um, and then, you know, I think Tom has mentioned this in previous meetings, but just, you know, do you want to be prescriptive, or do you want to be pretty flexible and, and be more incentive-based? Uh, so there's, there's ways to approach, um, codes, and so that's kind of the feedback we'll be wanting from you guys as we work through this long list.
Commissioners, any, I didn't, I didn't intend for there to be a lot of discussion in this, but, uh, thought it was worthwhile. Any brief questions that you, at this point, we're going to have our hands full later on, but?
I, I think one thing that, uh, Lindsay and I talked a little bit about, or Logan and I talked a little bit about was, uh, there's a lot of things being, being forced on us by the state. And I know Carolyn has a, a strong position on, you know, if the state says so, you got to do it. My position is if it's not good for the town, maybe we don't have to do it, or, or not necessarily incorporate it into our code, recognizing that every builder has to build what the state requires. But we don't need to focus on things that are not for the good of the town.
So the town is a home rural municipality, so it does have a lot more flexibility that with each of these requirements, one of the first things we look at is, is it applicable to a home rural municipality? Because, um, on matters of purely local concern, you are not required to comply with state mandates. The opposite is that in matters of purely statewide concern, you have to comply, and you can't moderate, you can't, um, deviate from those requirements on matters of mixed state and local concern, which most of these things that are new state mandates are, are considered mixed. Then there, you have to comply with the state stat, statute when there's a conflict, but where there's not a conflict, you can add more requirements. So a good example of that is the natural medicine ordinance that came into effect. So if you did nothing, you do not have to add that into your code, okay? Right now, though, that natural medicine businesses are not permitted use in any of your zoning districts. So should someone come in and apply, that puts the staff in an awkward position of saying, okay, is that a commercial use? Is that a medical use? Is that something that's just not listed at all? So we would suggest that it at least be added to zoning. Now, if you do nothing beyond that, then the state setbacks would apply. So you don't have to adopt different setbacks. You could just adopt, you know, just go with what the state says. But as a home rural municipality, you have extra discretion. And if you want less setbacks or more setbacks, you have the discretion to do that. You also have discretion to do other time, place, and manner restrictions, like how long is the business in operation? So that's a good one where you will have a lot of flexibility. The state has, has some requirements. They've said you have to require, you have to allow this business in your town, but within that, there is, so we, you know, I'd- But within that, there is, so we, you know, I'd certainly recommend adding it to some of your zoning districts. But beyond that, in terms of how much regulation you want, there is a lot of discretion. Of course, you make a recommendation to council and they may or may not have the same opinion as you guys do, but, you know, you can provide direction with your recommendation. You do have a public hearing at this level, at the planning commission level. There will also be a public hearing at the council level. So there's also a big opportunity here what that community input is. So it's going to be really a case-by-case basis as to whether the recommendation is to strictly comply, to incorporate those state requirements or not. And so when each of those come before you, another one is accessory dwelling units. That's going to actually be presented to you before the natural medicine regulations. And what we will do is provide you with that information as part of the staff report and presentation in terms of where do you have flexibility and what do we recommend in terms of how to proceed forward.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, Logan, anything else? There's a second part to this. So as they say, a little knowledge is a dangerous thing. Letting me see all those bylaws, which I had neglected to, that I wasn't aware that we were, we could appoint subcommittees and executive sessions and such. So I kind of got the idea in talking to the staff and my vice chair here. When we get around to these land use code amendments, we're going to try something a little different and going to give you each some homework individually and assign individual responsibility for the initial, what we'll call the initial parsing of details on the land use code. So that does not mean that we're not all going to participate, doesn't mean we're not going to have a public comment. But once we know what is on the agenda, I'll send something out indicating, for instance, Michael Lowry, you've got this item 6A, whatever that is, and you're going to lead off the discussion. So get you a little more, everybody a little more involved and then everybody will step in here. So humor me, if you will, but wanted to try this and see what comes of it. And perhaps, just like the land use code is a living document, this plan of mine may also be a living plan and it may fall by the wayside, but we're going to try this in any event.
So we're going to do a book report on the land use code?
Want to turn your microphone on and let the whole world?
We're going to do a book report on the land use code.
We're going to do a book report on, I know and you belong to a book club, so you should be very familiar when I assign you that particular book. All right, any questions on that? They all look puzzled. Okay. All right, with that, any other questions, reports? Commissioners, anything else?
Do we know what's going on at the reservoir yet? Massive earth movement. Looks like they're creating an island.
We did discuss at staff the other day and I don't think we got any confirmation, but I think it's the ditch company is shoring up their shoreline.
Most of what they're doing is 200 yards from the shore.
Well, there's, they are, I do believe they are trucking some of the soil offsite. But Justin, do you remember, did we get any follow-up on our discussion on that?
No, I didn't, but I do know we work with them on the access permit, you know, the access is off of Bus Grove. But we can reach out to them and find out exactly what they're doing.
If I had to guess, it looks like they're creating a huge island.
Have you seen drones too, Marty?
Thank you very much, Wendy. You should say touche. All right, anything else? All right, thank you all.